Joe, you ready? All right, good evening and welcome. It's Monday, April 12th, 2021, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. I guess I should let you guys know that this is the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Smyrna for that date, but forgive me. A little trying to get used to our old digs at a new time. It's our first meeting back since in this chamber since COVID, so I'm sure we will have some bugs to work out, but we'll get through it together. This meeting is called to order. At this time, I'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off or put into airplane mode. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, we'll have each application to include a presentation from city staff. Then we'll have the applicant come forward, tell us a little bit about the application, answer any questions from the board. And then when that has completed, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time. Will we be, I guess we'll still be cleaning in between speakers, so if you just bear with us a little bit with that and state your name and address for the record. And there's a, should be a sign and sheet on the podium that we'd like for you to sign with your name and address only. The rest of the information, oh, it's right here. So if you would just work with us on that, we will get you through and get everybody heard as quickly and expeditiously as possible. Once all the questions have been satisfied for the case and we've heard from the public, then we will have an opportunity for us to vote on the application. We also would like to ask that you keep your mask on at all times, keep a safe distance of six feet unless you're together. And if you are comfortable removing your mask, if you are comfortable removing your mask when you speak, it does help, but if you're not, that's fine. We'll get through it, like I said, together. So the first item, well, we've got a few items here that we are going to table, so if you'll just bear with us, we'll get through those as quickly as possible. And then we'll get to the first actionable item. The first item on the agenda is 2021-007 zoning request, Z21002. This is to be tabled to the May 10th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to table this item? A motion to table Mr. Seagraves, a second. Mr. Rice, all in favor of table and please vote. Okay, that item's been tabled, 7-0. All right, the next item on the agenda is item 2021-085. This item is also to be tabled to the May 10th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Can I get a motion to table this item? Motion, Mr. Bentley, second. Ms. Ostriga. All in favor, please vote to table this item. That item has been tabled, 7-0. The next item on our agenda is item 2021-132 zoning request, Z21-004. This is also to be tabled to the May 10th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. If I could get a motion to table, Mr. Smith, a second, Mr. Phillips. All in favor? Okay, that item has been tabled, 7-0 as well. The next item on our agenda is 2021-134. This is zoning request, Z21006. This item is also to be tabled to the May 10th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Motion to table, Mr. Seagraves, a second, Mr. Phillips. All in favor of the table, please vote. Okay. That item has been tabled, 7-0 as well. All right, the next item on our agenda is item 2021-139. This is zoning request, Z21-007. This is to allow for the rezoning from R15 to R10 for a two-lot subdivision at a density of 4.08 units per acre. It's .49 acres in landlot 304, 454 Smyrna Powder Springs Road. AOS 454 LLC is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Good evening, Joey Staub, Planner 2 with Community Development. This is rezoning case Z21-007. Applicant is AOS 454 LLC. Your recommendation tonight will go to Mayor and Council on May 17th. The subject property is 454 Smyrna Powder Springs Road. It's a little less than an acre, 0.49 acres in Ward 5. There's an existing single-family structure on the property, and the proposal is to subdivide it for a two-lot subdivision. Current zoning is R15. It would need to be rezoned to R10 for the subdivision. The existing land use for the property is low-density residential. To rezonate to R10, it would have to have a land use change to moderate-density residential. To the north of the property is Smyrna Grove, which has a private recreation and moderate-density residential. To the east southwest is low-density residential. It's part of Hickory Acres neighborhood, which is all low-density residential and R15. This is the proposed lot split. This is the existing lot configuration. This is the proposed lot split configuration. So it's on a corner lot. It would keep the existing house and build a new house on the corner. It'd have the R10 setbacks, front 17 feet on Hickory Lane, 40 on Smyrna Powder Springs, seven and a half on the side, and 25 for the rear. The new house would access off Hickory Lane. This driveway would be removed that connects to the other house. It would keep its access on Smyrna Powder Springs. No variances are needed for the R10. This is the proposed building elevation and house plan. And pictures of the existing property and adjacent property. Staff is recommending denial of the rezoning from R15 to R10 on .49 acres for the development of a two-lot subdivision at a density of 4.08 units per acre because of the precedence that was set for Hickory Acres and the zoning change and the land use change. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your application.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Joe, yes, sir.
Hold on, we gotta get a hazmat team out.
Where do I forward the slides? Great, thank you, thanks. Thanks for having us here. So my name is Bob Rash. Do you want my address?
Sure.
Yeah, 545 James Street Southwest, Littleburn, Georgia, 30047. It's been a long time since I've been standing here. Me and my wife lived on Lee Street in 2003. I went through a rezoning in 2005, built some homes, a small seven-home subdivision on King Springs. It turned out well, and we actually sold the last house about a month ago. Took that long. So I'm sitting here, I've been building since then. I'm working for Mr. Shanikey. It's his property. He's been my CPA for 15 years. Okay. So what we're looking at is, we're looking at, you know, the land around this house, and we're not trying to create tiny lots, and we're going to show that the two lots are larger than almost 40% of these existing lots in a quarter-mile radius. Also, the setback from the street, we're staying at 50, even though some, about seven homes around us are closer than the 50, but we're staying with that, keeping the corridor nice. Also for the city, we want to remove that curb cut, which Mr. Staub showed, onto the Old Concord, which is good for the city. And there's a lot of foliage at both corners that we want to take out for site distances. There's a stop sign there at Major at the Smyrna Powder Springs Road. Also, the house-to-house distance, on this presentation, I want to show that our house is further away, so we're in Hickory Acres, and there's A, B, and C block, and I'll just show the entire thing, 22 homes, 11 are closer than our house is to the next house. And then precedence-wise, yes, Smyrna Grove is right across the street, and it's at a 4.09 lots per acre. However, that includes all the roads and their green space, so their lots are way, way smaller. I mean, their average is, I think, .18. But anyways, I'm gonna go forward, make it quicker. You have seen this, we're taking out the curb cut to Old Concord. We're gonna load onto Hickory Lane, which is only one block long, so it's a very low, not many cars will be going there, so that's nice. We're looking to take this land to its highest and best use. We could renovate the house, we could expand the house that's there, but there's no way we could ever get the value, which is producing a new housing stock for Smyrna. And as you know, there's a high demand for homes. This would be a 21 to 2300 square foot home, new construction in the neighborhood, not very close to the other houses. Okay, the, so you can see where we are, we're right up against Smyrna Grove, the green, and then right below us is Hickory Springs Estates, also a pretty tight neighborhood. They're around four per acre also. It's 3.5, but they include the drive, so it's really about four. All right, all these greens show anything, all the dark green is anything smaller than R15. The whole neighborhood's, the yellow is R15. But as you can see, the existing lots at R15 are still smaller, and the bright green is smaller than our lot, the we want for the house, the .26. So, and right in where we are, the Block B, there's a 2.7, a 2.8, and a 2.9. I mean, we're not having a tiny, tiny lot in a, you know, with a bunch of other big lots. Okay, this is the, on the right, you can see the 50-foot setback from Old Concord, which is 50 foot from the right-of-way. So it's about 62 feet to Old Concord. So we're leaving that nice, big space, taking out that curb cut, taking out all foliage, making the site distance better. And when you look at on the left, both Smyrna Grove and Hickory Springs Estates have homes that are much closer, in fact, sometimes 25 feet from the setback, not 50. So we're trying to be good neighbors, make it nice that somebody will want to buy it. Now, these are, this is the neighborhood, A, B, and B block without the lot lines, so you can see if somebody just took the homes and, you know, threw them there on the land, does that new house look strange? It doesn't. It's got lots of room to the next house. And so all the red are closer, so we're 40 feet minimum from the next house, which is 15-foot build line, then 25 for us, and the home's probably not going to be right on the line. But anyways, so half the homes are closer than we're asking for, and yes, we're 15, up to 15 feet to our existing house, but there's also two 17s. Now, where did I get these numbers? I use the Smyrna GIS system. If it said 16, I use 17. So I was trying to be conservative. I didn't want to make it sound better than it was. All right, so now you can see it with the lot lines. The green cones are showing what the people would see in their backyard. So our existing home isn't even looking at our house, and the nearest neighbor, they can't see us from where they are. Our house has one window, the existing house has one window that would look at the new house. The other house, it, they, and the owner might be here, I don't know, but they had, I think, there's a garage on that side, but it might be renovated, it might not, but it's a garage side facing the new house. And then this is the view of the land with the lot lines, and you can see some of those trapezoidal, smaller lots, even in our neighborhood. Last slide, this is crazy busy, and I'm not, I, you know, like I said, we lived in Smyrna since 2003. I worked with Mr. Seagraves before. I think Smyrna's doing a great job. I'm just showing that there are times where, you know, you can see people took a single lot and put them in a two, put them in a three. Some don't really match the future land use. It's arguable because it kind of did before they took a right-of-way, and once they added the right-of-way, it's, there's no way it meets the zoning of the future land use. There's one in Walker Street from 2017. There's another one up at Mann Stevens Street from 2017. So we're just looking at precedence. We're not trying to put a crazy house in here. We're trying to do the highest and best use for the neighborhood. We're trying to make it pretty, and, you know, I did build in Lee Street, I built in King Springs, and I, that's all the information I have. So thanks for listening.
Well, a lot of information in your presentation. I appreciate the time you put to that. Any questions for the applicant? All right, let's see if there's anyone in attendance that'd like to speak. If you'd just give us just a second. All right, we are gonna ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak. We don't have to raise your hand, we just want you to come up to the podium, but give us a chance to clean the podium off in between speakers, please. And you can come up and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. If you have, if you have questions for the applicant, please direct your questions to the board, and we'll do our best to get those answers for you. Please state your name and address for the record. Good evening and welcome.
Hi. I'm signed in. I'm Jill Gordon Evans. I live in Hickory Acres Subdivision, 371 Hickory Acres Drive. I have looked at the things on the internet, and I'm speaking in opposition, and I've seen all the measurements and so on. I agree with everything the gentleman said, the lot sizes, the setbacks, and, but I do agree with the gentleman who spoke for the council about setting a precedent. I bought my home in '95 for $93,000, and a lot of the construction that has, and paid it off five years ago, has brought my property value up. And I remember how bad the apartments were there and the gunfire at night, and I think the city did a great job with trying to lessen the density in that area. It's not going beyond the zoning that much to put another home there. However, the person who will be the neighbor as you're facing that home to the immediate left on Hickory Lane, didn't purchase their home because there was a house to its immediate right, and they recently renovated that home, probably a year ago. The house that is across the street on Smyrna Powder Springs, Smyrna Powder Springs, was recently renovated. That person bought their home with the density in mind. I'm more concerned about the people who currently own the homes, not somebody who's come in and bought a home and is speculating that I may be able to subdivide a lot. I'm a capitalist, I'm not a socialist whatsoever, but I think the people who own the homes there should be respected, and they didn't buy their house right next to that lot. They bought their house because there's a large corner lot with plenty of open space, and I think the people that own homes in there should be considered before someone knew. Even though I believe that gentleman's drawings, and I've, you know, read them, and I know which homes he's talking about that he built, I don't dispute any of that. I just think that the consideration should be given to the people who already live there, and I don't want to see a precedent set, just like this gentleman from the city said. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. All right, give us just a second, sir, and we'll get you in, get you in and out up here. Good evening and welcome, sir. You can, or you can take it off, whatever you're comfortable doing.
I may be in the wrong meeting, I don't know. That's my caregiver back over there. I fell, broke my hip and my arm, but, January the 6th, I'm still in recovery. What I wanted to ask, I don't know if I'm in the right meeting or not, I go down, I've been feeding the turtles at the Big Lake on Lake Park Drive for 25 years and all the other wildlife there. I used to live in those apartments over there. I used to be the village at Lake Park, and they've changed names several times by us, but I saw a big sign down there, the last couple times I've been down there, it's a yellow sign that says-
For Lake Drive?
Yeah, Lake Park Drive, rezoning.
That's gonna be later on our agenda tonight.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Not yet.
I just, so it won't be long?
It won't be long, it won't be long. We'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions. I'm sorry?
I wonder if it's gonna affect the lake and the wildlife?
We'll get that answer for you this evening, but I can't, I can't let you start talking about something we haven't had presented yet.
Do you know how long it'll be, sir?
Just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And thank you for your service. Hold on one second, this gentleman, are you, yes, sir, just one second, sir. All right, come on up. Oh, yeah, we need to- Good evening and welcome.
Evening. My name's Gary LaRue. I'm the president for Chateau Walk HOA. HOA's 129 single-family homes, maybe about two blocks from this particular proposed property zoning. Our concern for our neighborhood is that we did buy into a neighborhood which is at least a half an acre zoned area. We find that the change in zoning to start creating these two houses on a half-acre lot begins to press into the density of the city that we've enjoyed living in with the kind of density it's been established with. We know the city has slowed down your concept of townhomes. You're looking at backing off for six months. I think it's probably a good decision because we don't want to see zoning and density get so high that it offsets our infrastructure and ability for our police and fire to respond, and this kind of development, in my opinion, will drive everybody with a half-acre lot looking to make one house into two houses. This precedent, to me, is wrong. We shouldn't be taking this on and allow the houses to stay as they were, as developed initially. And so therefore, we stand in opposition to this zoning change.
Okay.
Of course, ma'am.
Thank you for your time, Mr. LaRue.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance that wants to speak in favor of or opposition to this application that is not the applicant? Okay, I'll give you a chance to come back up here in just a second, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so- Thank you, Mr. Staub's. All right, now, yes, sir. Now, you can't sneak in as, come on, no, no, come on up, I'm sorry. Good evening and welcome.
How are you?
I was gonna say you can't sneak in as being in favor of it, because I already know you're the owner of it, right? A little joke there, so please state your name for the record.
My name is Ben Bush Shanikey, and we've owned this property at 24, sorry, my address is 2451 Cumberland Parkway in Atlanta. Obviously, I'm in favor of this zoning. We've owned this property since 2004, and all we're really asking for, really three things. One is, the smallest lot that we are going to put on this property, it's going to be 77% bigger than the lot in Smyrna Grove, which is right across from us. The smallest lot we're gonna put on this property, it's going to be 130% bigger than the smallest lot in Smyrna Grove. The smallest lot we're gonna put on this property, it's going to be 27% bigger than the minimum lot in Hickory Springs Estate, which is just right to the next of us. Like I said, we've owned this place since 2004, and we're not speculating. I used to live in Smyrna for 13 years, and when we bought this property, obviously, it was for the intention of trying to bring up its value at some point in time, and we think the time is right now to bring up that value. We are not trying to shoe-spun any housing to this, and as Mr. Rash has demonstrated to you guys, this is going to fit right in into the neighborhood.
Thank you for your time. Okay, any further comment? Any questions from anybody up here? Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion. You've got it. Go back, withdraw the motion. Heather. Select the motion, well, it's got it pre-selected up here. I have a motion to deny the application, but on his screen, it's saying a motion to approve. There you go. We have, we have a motion for Mr. Smith to deny the application. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second, Mr. Seagraves. All in favor of the motion to deny, please vote. Mr. Bentley? All right, I've got fat fingers too, and it doesn't work well on these screens. We're waiting on Mr. Bentley. Okay. Hold on a second, can you go back to that screen? The motion to deny is approved 5 to 2. Okay. So the motion is approved 5 to 2 to deny. This, this application will continue on to Mayor and Council when, Mr. Staub's? On May 17th. Thank you, guys, for your time. Good luck with your application. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 2021-141, this is zoning request, Z21-005. This is to allow for rezoning from GC to MU for mixed-use developments, 9.73 acres, landlot 779, 780, 805, and 806. This is 2400 Lake Park Drive, 2400 Lake Park Atlanta Office LLC is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Thank you. This is rezoning case C21-005. Applicant is 2400 Lake Park Atlanta Office. Your recommendation tonight will go to Mayor and Council on May 17th. The property is about 9.73 acres in Ward 2. Currently, there is an existing 105,000 square foot office building. The applicant wants to retain that, that office building and then build a mixed-use development with 277 multifamily units in the existing surface parking area. Existing zoning is GC, general commercial, and proposed zoning is mixed-use. The land use is office professional. We'll need a land use change to mixed-use to accommodate the mixed-use zoning. To the north and east is CRC and the City of Marietta, and the south and west is office professional along Lake Park. So I'll go over the proposed site plan. It'll have the mixed-use setbacks, a front zero, side zero, and rear 20. This is the location of the existing office building. This is where the, the new building will be, which is in the parking lot of the existing property. It'll have 277 multifamily units. It'll be about 3,000 square foot of leasing, bike center, mail, office, things like that in the corner. There'll be about 3,000 square foot of leasing, bike center, mail, office, things like that in the corner. There'll be about 10,000 square feet of retail and about 11,000 square feet of cowork office space. Be a pool courtyard in the middle, the, in the middle of the, um, building. They'll have a five-level parking deck for 382 spaces. And then on the, um, the perimeter of the building is 133 surface parking spaces that'll be shared for all of the assorted uses. There'll be a sidewalk connection to Cobb Parkway. And they will re-stripe the, um, existing access on Cobb Parkway. There'll be a multi-use trail connection that'll connect to Lake Park Drive. The stormwater detention facility is the existing pond that was mentioned previously. It's not gonna be disturbed, it'll exist like it currently is. And then there's a stream buffer along the perimeter of the property. There will be no impact to the stream buffer. There are three variances requested. To increase density from 25% to 28.5%. To reduce the minimum floor area from 900 square feet to 653 square feet. And reduce the minimum parking from 1,005 spaces to 515 spaces. The rationale for the, the floor area reduction, there are no three-bedroom units in this building. It's all studio, one-bedroom, and two-bedroom, um, units, which really reduces the, the overall square footage. And the parking reduction, um, they provided a parking demand model since these uses will be shared. The office peak period would be in the morning, the multifamily peak period would be in the PM. So they offset each other. They can use a lot of the parking spaces, um, together. This is the proposed elevation of the new building. And pictures of the subject property. And the adjacent property. Okay, so committee development recommends approval of the rezoning from GC to mixed-use conditional on 9.73 acres for a mixed-use development with 277 units, 10,148 square feet of retail, 10,897 square feet of cowork space, at a density of 28.5 units with the following conditions. Standard conditions regarding the architectural composition of the building. Two, requiring utilities to be underground. Three, they'll be responsible for any traffic improvements. Four, there'll be a strip of brick pavers at the entrance. No debris, be buried, uh, on any lot or common area. They'll install decorative streetlights within the development. And they'll comply with the city's tree ordinance. Tree plan will be prepared by Georgia Landscape, Georgia Register Landscape Architect. All common areas will be sotted. And then the special conditions, the setbacks will be the required mixed-use setbacks, front zero, side zero, rear 20. They'll meet all fire access requirements and water and sewer improvements. Be the developer's responsibility. They'll be responsible for stormwater improvements. And prior to issuance of CO, they will, um, maintain the stormwater detention pond per Blue Book Operations and Maintenance Guidance Document. 16, they will have a sidewalk connection to the development to Cobb Parkway and Lake Park Drive. 17, uh, prior to the LDP, the Land Disturbance Permit, GDOT will review their traffic study and site plan. 18, the development will not be gated. 19, regarding the minimum, uh, floor area of 653 square feet. 20, regarding the parking, uh, minimum. 21, stating that the, the parking will be shared amongst the, um, assorted uses. 22, the parking deck will have a decorative brick exterior. 24, they will re-stripe the private drive to, uh, that connects to Cobb Parkway. 25, the air-conditioned units will be screened from view. 26, dumpster, dumpsters will be positioned to prevent visual intrusion. 27, the maximum units will be 277 Class A, um, multifamily units. 28, that will be maintained in a Class A manner. 29, regarding interior finishes, um, they're basically Class A interior finishes. 30, the mixture of unit types will be 77% studio one-bedroom, 23% two-bedroom. And 31, 32, they'll be bound to the, um, site plan submitted on April 2nd. And they'll be bound to elevation submitted on April 2nd. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, do we have any questions from Mr. Staubes? It's all right. We'll get right with you, sir. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Good evening and welcome.
And with me this evening, thank you, Joey. With me this evening are Paul O'Shaughnessy and Eric Swan from Grub Properties, which is the, 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 uh, the member of the LLC that, uh, that is the owner of this, this property. I'm gonna let them talk about, uh, their, this project. When they're concluded, um, be happy to answer any questions you have and maybe have a little discussion about a couple of the, of the, uh, proposed conditions that we just need to clarify perhaps with, with staff. But thank you very much, and I'll hand things over to Paul.
Absolutely, good evening and welcome.
My name is Paul O'Shaughnessy. I'm in the development, uh, portion with Grub Properties and-
Hi, my name is Eric Swan. I'm also on the development team at Grub Properties, and I'll be talking about some of the infrastructure improvements we're planning to make.
So I'm gonna introduce, uh, the project and sort of the rationale for why we feel like this is something that will bring, uh, new energy to, to the, uh, development, why there is a need for new energy in that, in that corridor. Just starting, the purpose of this project is to serve as a catalyst to sort of bring a new energy to a commercial corridor that's somewhat older. And as we all know, is facing a lot of challenges after COVID. We'll get into details of that, but we want to bring something to the community, uh, that works inside of the infrastructure that already exists, but also create something new and brings people to the site as something that they would want to be around and, and helps uplift the retail and the other infrastructure and commercial real estate that's already there. So just a little quick summary of our history of the project. We bought this project already in 2019, and we've already spent about three and a half million dollars just upgrading the building itself. We've put in, uh, new lobbies, uh, new outdoor amenities. We've put in a lot of money into this project. We were able to bring the occupancy up to 82%. However, we're now back down into the 60 area post-COVID. It, it is going to be a challenging time for commercial real estate across the board. And so, uh, one of the things that we feel will be necessary for older offices like this is to, to have a, a younger workforce in close proximity that will bring tenants to the area and want to relocate in these offices. So what we're doing is bringing a mixed retail, mixed-use offering, some retail. The retail that we tend to bring here, as I just said, it's challenging, but we don't look at retail as a driver of the project. We bring retail that we think is sustainable and will work and create almost an amenity for both the office and multifamily. So, uh, businesses like coffee shops, uh, bike shops, things that complement the existing uses that we have within the building. And ideally, they would be local, uh, businesses. So we're not looking to get the highest and best rent there. We're looking to have something there that we don't have to re-tenant later on. Coworking is also a great use because as people are working from home more, and if they're in a smaller apartment like what we're proposing, they do need to break out to somewhere else. We feel like there's a natural demand for that space, uh, within the building. And as we already talked about, these are smaller units that are aimed at urban, young urban professionals. So your teachers, your nurses, you have the hospital across the way, your first responders, people in the ages of 25 to 35 that often find it's difficult to find somewhere new and exciting they'd like to live. So we're putting the retail in there and we're putting the, uh, the infrastructure improvements to attract people to that site. Just a little about ourselves, Grub Properties. We're a North Carolina company going back to 1963. We're a family company. What we're trying to promote is a market approach to housing accessibility. As everyone knows, it's difficult to find new housing at a, at a decent price point in the market. We're not creating what, you know, explicitly affordable housing, but accessible housing, so price points that people can afford. So if we're talking about studios and one-bedrooms in the lower end of the 1,000 range, and also providing transportation alternatives such as biking, walking, and these improvements to help people not have to use their cars as much, put less strain on the infrastructure, and also reduce their own expenses of not having to drive everywhere, gas, maintenance of the car. So hopefully, bringing a little bit more towards the rent check as construction costs continue to rise. We actually hired, we're the first, uh, private developer to engage, uh, a bike firm called Copenhagen Eyes. Uh, we did a study, which we've shared with the town, we shared with Marietta and a bunch of other people that Eric will speak about to talk about where we should be investing. And we are extremely committed to, um, bringing something that the community wants and contribute. So we, we've had a lot of conversations with people just to make sure that we were on the right track. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the office environment is going to be forever altered. We all know this. We've lived it over the past few months, over the whole year. Employers are thinking about what they need in their office space. Large commercial offices may, may not be a thing of, uh, a thing of the past. Imagine just trying to get inside of an elevator under current COVID protocols in a major office building. It could take, you know, as much as an, as an hour if people were to go two by two into a, into a space like that. And, um, we think that people will start opting for smaller options where maybe they could have their own building at 100,000 square feet or something like that. So there's gonna be an interesting shift, and there's gonna be a reduction of people's footprints. And the issue is that, that some of these, uh, projects now, they have an abundance of surface parking, which isn't particularly attractive for, for the actual people on site. The parking is itself attractive to be able to park correctly, but, um, it doesn't have a lot of energy on the site. And, and the younger workforce, which is crucial to these tenants, they're looking for something different that they can do after work. And so we're trying to provide that live-work-play alternative for, for that, uh, group of folks so that tenants will want to be around here. Retail is unfortunately even worse. Lots of major tenants are, are going bankrupt. What we're seeing a lot is, um, you see major tenants such as a Best Buy, uh, like you have along Cobb Parkway, being pulled into the malls, which are losing their major tenants, which just creates a vacancy along that corridor. These are things that are even beyond, you know, what's going on in Atlanta, it's a great place, but Macy's or whatever, they're going bankrupt, excuse me, nationwide. And so, um, there's an important urgency around just trying to maintain what you have and, and then trying to bring some folks into the area heads-on-beds just to, to get new retailers in there so that the corridor itself doesn't start to fall apart into pieces and have lots of, uh, what you call sort of, uh, existing vacancy problem that goes on and on. The site is up in the sort of top-left corner, and so when you're site level, you, you don't feel that you're at the battery, but as the crow flies, the battery is, is not that far. So what we've been focused on is just trying to bring a little bit of that energy of that, that investment up that way. So if we create two magnets sort of at both ends, that maybe we'll see, uh, a reinvestment into the commercial corridor there. And so, um, looking at just our site plan, we've kind of turned everything. This building is facing up towards Cobb Parkway, so try to give you directional north up there. But the leasing in the top corner, the retail, as I mentioned, and the coworking, that's how the first floor works. And then as you go above, it's all residential, and the parking is way off in the back in the least visible area up against, um, uh, utility easement for Georgia Power. Here are the renderings, using a lot of brick. This is Class A property. We actually just finished a project, uh, down in Grant Park in Atlanta. It's right next to Bill Kennedy and I-20, so if you're down that way, please go take a look. It's next to the Gun Castle Historic Redevelopment. We passed the Belt Line Overlay Committee, so we have experience also with being in a trail area. And, uh, we, we pay a lot of attention to our facade detail. I think it's something that you'd be proud to have in your community. This is the other side from Cobb Parkway. So I'm gonna hand it off to Eric. He's gonna talk a little bit about the biking initiative and the infrastructure.
Thank you, Paul. So as Paul mentioned, we are actually the first private developer to utilize the services of Copenhagen Eyes in North America. They are, are, we worked with our Montreal office and basically wanted to understand how we could approach this property and think about its connections to amenities and to other adjacent communities. What they did is they performed a holistic assessment of both existing and planned connections and tried to understand how this project could link to them. Basically, they created a white paper for us with recommendations that we then shared with local stakeholders. Among those stakeholders were the City of Smyrna, the City of Marietta, Cobb County, and the Cumberland CID. We had very positive conversations and, uh, and generally, everyone was supportive in terms of pursuing this idea. What you see here is a conceptual route of the trail based on our discussions and the recommendations that were provided by Copenhagen Eyes. We explored several ideas through this process, uh, but we thought that having the trail run across, uh, run along the creek made the most sense just in terms of connectivity to the battery in particular. However, this plan can certainly evolve as we continue to engage the community and receive more feedback. You know, your, your feedback has been critical during this process so far, and, uh, it's gonna be important moving forward to make sure that we're bringing forward something that you all are interested in. Basically, we, we want this to be a trail that serves the community and something that, that we're excited about as well as the community in general. We've taken a very thoughtful approach and have tried to understand the needs and opportunities that have been conveyed to us. What you see here is a portion of the trail that Grub Properties would construct. This is on land that we own, as well as that which is owned by the adjacent offers, uh, offices, uh, excuse me, Office Owners Association. And they're actually very excited as well about the idea of adding an amenity to the site that would serve their, uh, their residents and tenants as well. So there are a number of benefits to trail systems. They are an amenity that is, are sought after by homebuyers. They have a positive effect upon community health and wellness. And increased connectivity will also allow for less dependence upon cars and will minimize environmental impact. So for a number of these reasons, we think this would be a great fit on this project. I'll turn it back to Paul to close things out for us.
So just looking at this project again, you know, change unfortunately in commercial real estate is inevitable. COVID's impacted the way things will look going forward. And as the US reacts to that, I think there's going to be, uh, communities that approach that challenge with some new ideas that help to save the, the, um, built environments that they have and even enhance them. We add, we added a few visuals here, um, of retail that actually works in the area that you all will recognize. The battery obviously is, is very close to here, but also Avalon. And most importantly, the Belt Line. We, as we said, we have a project down at Grant Park, so we're really familiar with the energy that that trail had created. And we feel like we could be a catalyst to start a larger, um, that kind of, that kind of large amenity that really is something that's really world-class. And, and again, young people will want to be around, and bringing younger people in is gonna help those office buildings, uh, stay vibrant and attract employers that need them in their workforce as, as they're downsizing their footprint. So we feel like, uh, this is the solution that could really create a, a magnet at both ends of Cobb Parkway. As, as everyone knows, there's, there's retail there that works, and then there's some retail there that's very challenged. We need to keep those main anchors like Target and Best Buy that are there on the site and not moving over to the mall and creating vacancy along the corridor, which would be very difficult to replace because big-box stores are, are the ones that are really difficult to find. Again, the, the smaller inline retail is the stuff that can live around it. And so if we bring this link demographic of what we do, our, our, our project is aimed mostly at 25 to 35-year-old urban professionals, um, it's very attractive to employers. So even though this is a suburban community that maybe didn't have some of those amenities that attracts younger folks to the area, we feel like we can be, uh, the place that they can live, but also the place that they want to go out and, and work and play, uh, at the same time. And again, heads and beds, uh, folks that are within walking distance of the existing retail will help drive up, uh, new concepts, whether it's a new brewery or new coffee shop, those things. If we put residents in close proximity to your retail corridor, it will help uplift, um, some of those struggling tenants. some of those struggling tenants. That's really all we have for today. And just happy to answer any questions or ideas that you have around this project.
Paul, Eric, well done. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Jones.
Hey, thanks for coming today. So I just had, so one question just to clarify for the gentleman in the back. Will there be any effects to the pond that's nearby?
So the, we would seek to, effectively, the trail that you see here exists already. It's the asphalt trail. We're trying to widen it, make it better, make it more usable, and clean up the area. But we don't want to negatively impact the wetlands. That's what's drawing people there. We want to be, we want that to be nicer, not eliminate that. And we can come up with a plan. Construction-wise, we're already reaching out to people that are trail specialists in construction for this plan. Our general contractor that we work with actually constructed a portion of the Belt Line north of I-20, so they have a lot of familiarity with that product. But the intention here is to enhance this, not to negatively impact it. As a matter of fact, bringing, I just walked the site today. There's actually a really neat spillway on the other side of Lake Park Drive that this trail would access to. So bringing more people into the wildlife area and be able to interact with that without trying to, you know, disturb it.
Okay, thank you. And would there be any onsite recycling for the residents?
Recycling? Yes. So one of the amenities that we do that's important to us is a cycle center. So we treat this, oh, recycling, I'm sorry. Yes, we always do recycling. So something that we're really important to us is sustainable solutions, whether it's sustainable in terms of using the existing infrastructure, creating different transportation options, but also just being generally conscious about our energy usage and recycling. We absolutely would want to do that. As a matter of fact, our target demographic, if we weren't to provide recycling, I think it would be a huge negative for the property.
Awesome. And do you have, plan to have any affordable housing units?
No, what we're planning here is a market rate project, but the smaller units that we have are generally accessible to people that make 80% of area median income. So again, we're targeting that group of folks that maybe, you know, have a teacher or a nurse that may not be in the highest earning income. But we create a very efficient floor plan that they like and create things around them to sort of lower the cost of construction and provide them with a price point that's sort of naturally within their price range.
And you said it was looking at like 1,000 to 1,500 for the studios?
Yeah, we would try to get something at 1,000 and then the 1,500 would be more like your bigger one bedroom. So we have a studio, a junior one bedroom, and a full one bedroom. They all have balconies. They all have spaces. So you could sort of grow with the project. If you started there, you could move up as you go. And we have a long-term renter program that if you're with us for five years, we cap your rental increases after that time because that benefits us to have folks that stay in the property, create community. We don't want to price them out. We want to keep them there. It's actually more costly for us to have to turn the unit over, re-lease it, paint it, all of that. So that's what we're involved with and want to have happen.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you. We'll see if, oh, Keith? Sorry, Mr. Bentley, I'm used to talking to you on the phone.
Yeah, I'm very interested in the slide here about the bike path. And as you mentioned, part of this, the part we're talking about, I guess, is Smyrna where the facility is. And then it crosses over into Marietta at some point. And other, I guess, county, other entities might be involved. I just wondered if you could talk a little bit, how does this actually happen?
So what we are proposing here is to build either on the land that we own or the land that the Office Owners Association actually controls. And we've spoken to them about what we want to do, and they're all in favor. So we're drawing a path to where we can control that. But additionally, we did have conversations at the very beginning with Marietta, with the CID, with Smyrna, with Rusty was there, also Georgia DOT, to talk about, hey, this is what we're doing. Are we putting the trail where you guys would want to maybe add on to it in the end? So we've already started those discussions. But in terms of what we're promising is what we can actually control and already have preliminary agreements to build on.
So how far does that go? I don't?
It goes as far as what we're showing here on the screen. So this is, you know, we want to be the catalyst for a larger project. There are easements along this creek. There are other potential easements up north of the Target. So again, as Eric mentioned, you could potentially take a different path if there was an easier way to build out the second leg. And there were actually some studies done by the City of Marietta that they're sharing with us to show where they've analyzed this before. But we would actually be incentivized to stay in the conversation and keep being the catalyst for that larger conversation. But in order to approve the rezoning, we only want to commit to that which we can deliver on. So if we put it there and people start using it, it looks great, you know, we can continue the conversation on trying to get it over to the battery. I will say off the record, actually have a business relationship with the owner of the Stadium Walk property, and I've already brought that up to them. So there are other things that Grub can bring to the table. I'm not making any explicit promises on behalf of another owner. But we do have a couple of ideas on how we could push the dialogue forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So if you would just bear with us while we clean up the podium, we would like to open the floor for any public comment on this application. All right, you're welcome to come back now, sir. Yep. I really wish we could move a microphone for him. Can you? Oh, hold on. We might come to you. How about that?
I'm all right. I can still sing all the rules up. I'm getting used to this walker. Thank you very much, ma'am. I think the gentlemen have already answered my question, but I just want to confirm it. Again, I used to live at the village at Lake Park that one of the premier complexes in the state over there.
Sir, excuse me, real quick. I need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Michael Ray, and I live in Powder Springs now. I wish I could have bought a home in Smyrna when I finally moved, but it was out of my price range. But I love Smyrna. This is, my heart is in Smyrna, my home's in Powder Springs. But I just wanted to ask the gentleman with the development if the lake is going to maintain its pristine condition because I've been feeding those animals. I got pictures of them, the giant turtles, the alligator snappers are out now, out of hibernation. And they've got cranes down there, beautiful herons, and it's the natural wildlife. And I was just wanting to know that, you know, thank you, that the lake was going to stay. I'm all for your walking trails because those walking trails are rotted out and boarded. And I think that lake, if in the clock tower, owned by that apartment complex over there, even though it's changed since over the years. But is the lake going to stay in its pristine condition for the animals that live there?
Yes, and that would be our, I'm sorry. Yes, that is our intention, is to make sure that we have as minimal impact as possible. Anything we want to improve the lake and make it something that folks want to be around and interact with the way you're doing, but creating it more inviting. I just walked it today.
Yeah.
And there's just a lot of opportunity to create something that the whole community can enjoy. So that's, that's our intention.
I agree with you because it's all the boards around there are rotted out.
Yeah.
And people used to use their bicycles and jog down all the time. And whoever has control, that's very dangerous.
Yeah.
There. But, you know, as far as the lake, down there where the gazebo is, where I go feed bread and crackers to the big alligator snappers and the hundreds of red slider turtles that are in that lake and rock turtles. I mean, it's a real nature preserve. And I've been feeding those animals down there for 25 years, and those alligator snappers are this big.
Yeah.
And they got heads on them like that. And they're beautiful creations of God. And they're all native to the southeast part of the United States. So that's why I estimate, I think your development, as far as I'm concerned, I think it's a good idea. And being on those walking trails in there where people can walk or jog and use bicycles, but just the pristine area of the lake be maintained for all the beautiful wildlife and the trees that are down there, the gazebo, is just, to me, a slice of paradise is all I can say. And thank you for giving me your time today.
I'd be happy to follow up with some sort of assessment of the wildlife there and add that into our studies just to make sure that we are, have following a good plan of construction because our, you know, our purposes are aligned and happy to, you know, we want more folks like you around that lake. So that's, we can even take a survey of what's going on there, maybe even look at some signage to help people identify the animals that are there.
Yeah, it's, in fact, if you go down to the gazebo, there's a sign under the gazebo that says no fishing. And when I lived for years over at the village at Lake Park for 23 years, I got that sign put up because people go down there with rod and reels, and there's really not any big fish in there.
Yeah.
They're just little small brim. And they're just, you know, I throw crackers out of them. I call them ballerina fish. They'll jump up, eat the crackers. And then the big turtles and the small ones will come down to eat the bread and other crackers and the ducks. But I'm so thrilled to know that you're not going to mess with the lake.
Nope. And Eric, if you wouldn't mind just getting with the jump, you want to give Eric your phone number and your way to contact?
If you'd like just to look at some of the beautiful animals that are down there. I bought some pictures, especially the-
All right, guys. I've let this go long enough.
I'm just thrilled that you're not going to mess with the lake.
Absolutely. And we're, and I went way off our normal protocol with you, sir, out of respect.
Well, you're very generous, and I appreciate the extra time you gave me. And God bless all of you. And thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yeah, no worries. If we could, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Ma'am, do you want to come up and speak at the podium? Can we sanitize that for her, please? Good evening and welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
There. Good evening. My name is Carol Hayline. I'm a Smyrna resident. Actually, this is not the reason why I came up here. It's for, actually, for your previous. Unfortunately, I was working this evening and didn't get to that. So I still have, would like to speak to one of you afterwards about that in particular. But I do have a question regarding this. This is kind of important, too. And it goes towards the gentleman's question, not just the lake.
If you could just direct your questions to us, ma'am. I'm sorry. I normally don't let the conversation-
Not just the lake, but my curiosity is what's going to happen with the trees.
Okay.
Just the environmental impact.
In the pre-discussion, and they'll let these guys come back up and answer that specifically, but one of the neat things about their plan is they're taking an existing parking lot that's already been developed for the lion's share of this project. So I would imagine by virtue of that, it would minimize some of the damage. But we'll let them, we'll let the applicant come up and speak to that.
What do you want me to do?
Thank you very much. We have to have a record of everybody that comes in.
No problem.
Just don't put your social security up there. All right, before you come back, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case? Okay. That public comment is closed. If you could come up, Paul, and speak to that. I believe the question was related to the tree impact. So if you could tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, so one of the conditions is that we abide by the tree protection plan of the city. However, just to address-
Just speak into the microphone. She can hear you much better.
That's fine. You know, I actually just walked the site today. And the way the paths are going, we would prefer just to widen them and not impact the trees at all because that costs us money to cut down trees. We're actually going to go out to the site soon here and try to get some of the vines and stuff because that area has not been really tended at all. There's a lot of trees in there that are about to die because ivy has climbed very high on those trees. So they're in some pretty big danger. There will be some trees that are in parking islands now, but they'll be replaced by trees on the site. So as we take out the surface lot, we're going to put trees back around the project. But we have, you know, black and white that we have to buy by tree protection. And then the whole point of the trail is to be in nature. So we want to impact that as much as possible. We're trying to go out there right now and just save some of the stuff that's there.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Is there any further discussion on this application?
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for zoning case Z21-005. We have a motion to approve, Mr. Phillips. We have a second, Mr. Rice. All in favor or opposed? Please vote now. The application is approved. Seven zero. Gentlemen, thank you for your investment in our community and good luck with your project as you move through mayor and council. All right. The next item on our agenda is ordinance 2021-05. This is approval of the ordinance 2021-05 for the Code Amendment to the City, Code of Ordinances, Section 402 and 505, Home Occupation, City of Smyrna. Mr. Martin.
All right. Good evening. I'm Rusty Martin. I'm the Community Development Director. What we have before you all is a proposed text amendment that deals with the Home Occupation Ordinance for the City of Smyrna. The proposed text amendments deal primarily with updating the ordinance to our current practices, trying to make sure there's not any conflicts between the ordinance in certain sections versus other sections, and then just removing a requirement for the need to have a notification letter sent to adjoining neighbors that are within a 300-foot radius of the property. I think the councils received some calls about the home occupation process and specifically the notification process. They asked staff to review it and come back with some recommended changes and look at the ordinance in its totality. We've done that, and these are basically our recommendation, recommended changes to council at this point. As you see, the first one eliminates home occupations for physicians, surgeons, dentists, lawyers. Basically, that provision in that first sentence allows for, allows for general, general public contact. So they could have emergency treatment or consultation sessions with people. This sentence is in conflict with other requirements in the ordinance that prohibit the general public from visiting the site. So in addition, from an enforcement perspective, it's difficult to tell if somebody's doing an emergency consultation or they're just doing day-to-day practice there. That's a pretty tough case to make in front of a judge when you're doing a code enforcement issue, whether it's an emergency issue or not. So in our opinion, we'd just like to eliminate it completely because we don't think it's enforceable. And then also, the last sentence is removing one-chair beauty parlor. This in direct conflict with the requirement not to allow contact with general public on the property. And when I mean contact, I mean actual people coming to the property to do business. You can have contact via the phone or internet sales, that's fine. But no actual physical person coming to the property to do business. The next section that we amended is Section 505.5, and that's basically just to eliminate on-street parking and just say there should be no customer parking permitted on the property. 505.6 adds ads or internet. So it now reads, "No use shall involve general public contact on the property other than by telephone or internet." 505.12, we're eliminating, that's the section that requires the public notification to the adjoining property owners. So we're eliminating that section completely. Section 505.13, this, the bottom half of that is eliminating the requirements to go before mayor and council. Ultimately, in the ordinance, if you were doing administrative, you know, or office work, you don't need to go before council for a public hearing. But if you were doing anything other than that, then you would. Going back and looking at the number of- Going back and looking at the number of home business applications, there's, oh, let me see, 97% of the businesses are administrative or consultants, and it's a, you know, this section really doesn't apply anymore today. So we're, we're recommending taking that out, and then section 505-14, or point 14. It just requires, if you have a home occupation certificate, you got to get a business license to operate. And, and it eliminates the section that requires renewal by mayor and council every year. We don't do that currently. I imagine at some point prior to me being this, in this position, or me being with the city 15 years ago, they made the decision that renewals would just happen automatically on a yearly basis, and they didn't have to come back to council. So we wanted to modify the code to, to reflect exactly what we're doing today. And then 505.18 is just, is basically wordsmithing, and, you know, fixing the code to be a little bit clearer. With that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions you guys may have about this code amendment.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. This is a public hearing. I'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opportu, uh, opposition to said ordinance. All right, let the record show there are none. Any discussion about the ordinance from the board? Okay, if I could get a motion. I have a motion to approve, Ms. Ostraga. I have a second, Mr. Smith. Please vote. The motion, or the ordinance is approved, 7-0. All right, the last item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the March 8, 2021 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Are the board members, I need a motion to approve, accept the minutes as presented. Are there any amendments need to be made? I have a motion to approve, Mr. Rice. Second, Mr. Seagraves. Two hardest-working men on, on the board tonight. No offense, Charlie. The minutes are approved, 7-0. All right, is there any further business discussion, anything? All right, well, this meeting is adjourned at, I really want to, I really want to say 6:12, but I know it's 7:12 in the PM.